City of Lamarc, City Council's regular agenda of October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarc, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on October fourteenth, twenty twenty four, beginning at six P M. In council chambers at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarc, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to Section five five one dot one two seven B, the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer and the Quorum of the Lamarc City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarc, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. Council will meet for for the purpose of considering the following agenda. Meeting has been called to order. Akira, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Thank you. Let's stand for our invocation and our pledge. We're going to ask Councilmember Ross to lead us in our pledge. I will lead us in our invocation. Bow your heads. Eternal God, we certainly acknowledge your presence in our lives. We acknowledge your presence in this great city that we call home and certainly, God, we thank you for that ever ever abiding presence. God, we certainly need you now. Direct our our thoughts, our discussions, our deliberations, Lord, that your will be done, that your name be glorified, and that the people of this great city, Lord, benefit somehow, some way in the end. Bless, Lord, those people, each and every family. Bless each and every appointed staff member of this great city, as well as these elected officials. That all, Lord, be in your grace and mercy. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America, which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
And now at a point of our proclamations. And I believe we have one for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I am under the understanding that the Resource Crisis Center is was invited to participate today. Do we have any persons from the Resource Crisis Center?
Very good. We will read this into the record and I ask Mr. Garcia to ask one of his staff members to present this to that great great organization. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarc Proclamation, whereas the month of October has been designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, time to recognize victims and raise awareness about the devastating impact of domestic violence. And whereas the effects of domestic violence can be life threatening, not only for survivors, but for the entire community around those who have been victims, be it family, friends, coworkers, or neighbors. And whereas this year's theme Heal, Hold, and Center personifies the commitment to work together to embrace diverse paths to healing from violence and oppression, committing to holding space for survivors and center those marginalized in all our efforts to end domestic violence. And whereas the City of Lamarc acknowledges that this kind of abuse affects everyone without prejudice, men, women, and children of all races, religions, and cultures. And whereas community organizations such as the Resource Crisis Center of Galveston County prove to be an invaluable resource for those in our community who are in need of assistance via hotline and a myriad of features such as legal, residential, and therapy service. And now there and now therefore, we, the mayor and the council, by the virtue of authority vested by the City of Lamarc, do hereby proclaim this month of October twenty twenty four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Lamarc, and do encourage all citizens of Lamarc to recognize this month by seeking education regarding domestic violence. Testimony whereof witnessed my hand, the seal of the City of Lamarc, this eighth day of October. Keith Bell, Mayor, let's give a round of applause for the awareness of Domestic Violence Month and certainly of this great organization, the RCC, that continues to stand in the gap to provide services for our community in many of the worst times of need.
National Code Compliance Month. I believe the Code Enforcement Department is here with us today. Is that right? See a bunch of wonderful people in gray. I believe that's the code compliance colors. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Code compliance is black and white. Welcome. I'm here. Many of you know it was not that long ago where our Code Compliance Department was a department of one. I believe this Kathleen Van Severn was our singular code enforcement officer for many, many years. In the city of Lamarc, understood in order to grow, we have to be clean. We are not always perfect in that, but we do endeavor to be better. Code compliance is one of the tools that municipal governments have as a resource that help continue to keep our city not only compliant with our codes, but clean. A cleaner city, intended to be a safer city, intended to be a city that keeps one of the best. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarc Proclamation, whereas Code Compliance Officer provides for the safety and health of residents living in Lamarc, in the workforce, in building, yard, and environmental property management, and other code enforcement. Whereas Code Compliance Officer dedicated work right in house property management. They take their yard seriously, proudly of their department, they offer them, you know, protection, promoting life, safety, and keeping everybody safe in the course of their day job. And whereas the City of Lamarc Code line is important, supporting the overall durability of our community by addressing one to their effective communication, funding, education regarding code compliance required and why these are necessary, and the future proactive education training for our partner, our association, the community. Whereas the American Association of Code enforcement officers, acting on behalf of its more than thirteen hundred members, was a totally set aside to honor and recognize our code compliance office. And whereas we recognize that many valuable contributions made by code enforcement officers in the department throughout our country, create our heartfelt thanks for their continued efforts for the purpose. Now being involved and frequently involved, recognized, community development of the code enforcement office. Now therefore, who the mayor and the council, by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarc, who will plan October twenty twenty four and National Code Compliance Month, that's known where of, witnessed by the City of Lamarc, for the eighth day of October twenty twenty four. Give a round of applause for code. I'm going to ask Chief Bailey Barrett, as the Department Head of Economy, to introduce you to one of the people.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As I know, we have a completely different face for code enforcement. Everybody sitting up here is certainly very new within the last year and a half. Most of them in the last year. We have our code enforcement supervisor, who they are named after, comes from another city with about a decade's worth of experience in code enforcement. We have Robert Ernie, our code enforcement two officer, who has also had a wealth of experience from other towns. Now, we have our other code enforcement officer, who is a newly certified code enforcement officer, who will be finishing up helping out in his dog meat as well. It was currently in our code enforcement class, and we have our newest hired, who's four foster, pet foster, who recently came and joined our ranks, who gives us a full staff of complemented officers, as well as our administrative assistant for code, Mr. Mr. Sanchez, and a permanent technician, a career team. This is your code enforcement division. You will see them out and about. They are all available. The phones will always be open. You guys, we're here for the city. We have an excellent team. You guys, these guys are really hard. They average about.
Yeah, just.
They pick up about a hundred discounts a month, and we average about a hundred and fifty cases a month between new cases, the foot records, and they manage to close out about eight, assuming they're just longer. And for those that don't understand code enforcement, the help of this code and legislation really makes sense. And like, I'm assuming either the process you have to follow, because these guys feel the close out about eight days a month, you guys are really getting it.
Give him one more round of applause. We will now have the concessions to our new fire dog. Is that right? Where's Chief Mayor?
Right.
Uh, Accelerator Detection K nine is what he is professionally, he or she, what he is professionally called. But we call him cop. Is that right?
We do. So, um, probably last year, we started from the process of looking for grants for a Accelerator Detection K nine, which the newest, they now call them ignitable liquid detection K nine, the investigator's handbook says that. So we got, we came with the cops, and we generously donated a fully certified dog between Amber and him dog. We were awarded a grant for a fully certified dog in pain. And then we kept going, and there is a company called Stronghold, Stronghold LTD. They actually named it as a large amount of items that we released to start a daily program. Dog bowls and leashes and all the things that go with with the dog. So, um, we're going to bring Kai in. We didn't have a name for him. He is a twenty month old Dutch Shepherd. And he is, um, we didn't have a name for him, so we made him a special name. And allow the citizens to come up with a name, and they came up with Kai. And Kai has two meanings. The alternate meaning of Kai is fire, and the initials K A I stands for K nine Accelerator Investigator, or K nine R C D. So this is Kai. He is fully certified. Him and his handler just went through a hundred and sixty hour course of being certified in the state and international association for Accelerator Detection K nine. This dog's drive is something out of a book. He is able to detect ignitable liquids, up to fifteen different ignitable liquids in the smallest micro lean, which basically pointed out that that's ten micro leans, a typical ball point pin, while he can find it in a football field. And he did it. They, for the last four weeks, six weeks, they have been going through various buildings, in open fields, in building searching. He is also the first in his time. He is the first, we are the first in this town to have the Accelerator Detection K nine in District Galveston County. It's talking to the behavior through, but we know with him, try to work with him. He hangs out around the office, and he's going to be doing a whole lot of P R as well, so he can. We are excited to have him and see how he does.
Very good. Very good. Welcome, Kai. All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks, guys.
Item five, citizen's participation limited to three minutes. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who may speak, who signed up, may speak to council, limited to three to three minutes. If you wish any speak, give the mayor, the presiding officer, your full legal name, your address, and I am wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personal matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are participating via telephone. Press the microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen if you are participating via Zoom on your smartphone, tablet, or computer. And if you are here with us in person, there is a podium, the center aisle. When your name is called, you may approach, and you will be heard. Let's remember to try to address council as a whole, or at least as a district, so that we can limit any potential personal attacks or perceived personal attacks. And so if we do that, we will, I believe, be able to get through this. Call out any persons online wishing to speak.
Yes.
Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Small, and I live at eleven twenty one Prune Street.
Welcome.
Um, I'd like to ask that from now on, events for the city, specifically like Coffee with a Cop or Snow Cone with a Cop, not be sponsored by anyone on council. It takes the event and makes it about them. And the last event, which took place at Barcina's, was used to alienate a council member and harass her. This is the second event from the city that I've seen do that. We've got the Lamarc Police Academy Association has used that event to harass and alienate her, and now we have the event, Coffee with a Cop at Barcina's. Ms. Yancy was accused of dining and dashing from.
Small, don't don't use her name. Don't use her name, but but you.
She was accused of dining and dashing from a restaurant, which was completely untrue. Several citizens called Barcina's and confirmed that she tried to pay and was told that she didn't need to. And they didn't sound very happy about having to answer all those calls. And I tell you, that kind of drama and unprofessionalism, it's unnecessary and it's ugly. And I can't even go to these events anymore with my kids because, you know, one of them's been under attack by one of your council people, and that at this complaint just rolled off the table to never be heard from again. That is an employee sitting there. My child is a minor. Okay, my child had to look over his shoulder for his whole internship, which should have been like the coolest, greatest experience, and wonder if someone was going to come in and say, hey, you actually can't have this job that he earned. But these, you know, I'm, I give up on it. I, I, if nobody cares, some of you who've reached out to me and wanted to do the right thing, I appreciate you. Some of you don't care about what's being said online, maybe because it's not about you. That's fine. But what has been said about the one council person who has been under attack over every every event, okay, is used to alienate her, and it's ugly and it needs to stop. She won by a landslide. The citizens want her. Okay, there's nothing illegal going on. She won by a landslide, and she had a every right to have a peaceful protest about something, about something with, what was it, Black Lives Matter? And to use that against her after all these years, that's her her right as an American. Some of y'all want to talk about freedom of speech, but then you want to alienate her from anything because she participated in a Black Lives Matter protest. So she's owed an apology, and I wanted to make sure the entire city knew. She did not dine and dash from that restaurant. That is completely untrue. That is a lie. She did attempt to pay, and Barcina's and other places are not going to want to host us again.
The small.
Yes, sir.
It's your time. Thank you. Any other persons online wishing to speak? Let's move to those here that are present with us today. This is, I do not want to butcher your last name, Kathy. Miss, ma'am, what is, is it Kathy? Grenard, welcome, Miss Grenard. I'm so sorry. Name and address for the record.
I'm here to talk about fifteen thirty five Newman Road, construction of the new residential house. We went through the process with planning and permitting two, almost two years ago, and during that time, we paid impact fees for water and sewer. So the City of Lamarc had every opportunity to review everything, and at that time, we paid for sewer. Now we're in the process of construction, and earlier this year, we were told that no sewer is available. We have filed a complaint with the city manager, and this is probably the next step in the process before we go to the state to try to get this resolved. It's causing an undue hardship on my nephew that is building the house. You know, we only are approved for so much of the construction alone. It's holding up construction. We will be substantially complete within the end of, by the end of November, but yet we get that's the our option. We, we have been in contact with the Director of Public Works, and we are waiting, I guess, for some time.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
And we just didn't lose the momentum of moving this forward. I don't know what else to say. I'm back to pop the exception from the office of the voice of the public. I mean, we feel like we entered into an agreement with the city for sewer, and to be told that sewer is not taken down. There's nothing we can do about it, and that's really not what, that is not what's happened so far after we filed the complaint. So before that, it was like, it's just going to have sewer. And in the area of town up at Newman Road, there are planted lots that are available there that that's been in the family for a long time, and now that the older generation is moving upon the newer, the kids basically want to sell those lots. And we have an opportunity, I guess, to have some more development happen up in the road, if we can get sewer down the road. That's all I have to say.
Ma'am, Miss Kathy, thank you for those comments. We cannot, as a body, we cannot respond to you because then it would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. But I can ask, if Gus will allow me, I can ask. Someone told you sewer was not available. Could you help us to understand what what did they mean by that?
Through Public Works and you applied for tapings, and at that point, that was when we received something back that said, oh, we got water, but you don't have sewer. So we were already through our construction period, deciding to get our taps or.
Yes, ma'am. That is the City Majesty Caesar Garcia. Sitting over to your left, second, I believe, over or third over is Rick. He's our Public Works Director. Certainly, Mr. Garcia, would you visit with Miss Kathy before she leaves tonight? Thank you. Thank you, Miss Kathy. Michael Seltzer. Michael Seltzer. Robert Mistich. Welcome, Robert. Name and address for the record.
Robert Mistich, twenty four North Curlew Street, Lamarc, Texas. Seven dot one, which is your female ordinance. I've already said my piece before on this several times. I'm going to do what you're going to do. Eight dot five, I'm going to discuss a memorandum for the Citizen Police Academy of Lamarc. You'll remember, before this administration, the Citizen Police Academy of Lamarc won the number one spot for all the Citizen Police Academies in the state of Texas. It was a great deal. A lot of work went into that, and it's still a great organization. Now, once before, the C O U was brought up, and I can tell you that the state advised not to sign it. And there are very few that's ever been signed by any of them. And this one was certainly not written in a way that was favorable to this organization.
They haven't, apparently, there's some difficulty, Mr. Mistich, hearing you at home. And it's been, it must have been happening before you even got to the podium. Is the green light on, Mr. Mistich? You you you'll definitely be reclaiming your time. It's not on. Can we? It's unplugged? Okay. That's, how how much time did Mr. Mistich have? Let's, uh, you want to start it? Let's let's start him. Let's let's just start him over on on three minutes. Proceed, Mr. Mistich. Okay.
Uh, the memorandum, the state even advised that it shouldn't be signed, and like I said, there's only been a handful that has. This one was written in a way that is certainly not favorable or helps the Citizen Police Academy. And I would caution about pursuing any kind of action against them. Each one of you that are sitting up here, Flirt, Ernie, everybody, city manager, have all received a recent document today. I should review that because that is going to play a big part in coming up here. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mistich. Mr. Robert Harvey, Harvey? Robert Harvey? Welcome. Uh, if you would do me a favor, uh, so that the folks at home can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Welcome. Name, name and address for the record, please.
I'll put my name on that piece of paper. I'm not going to say my address because you're live on the internet. I'm live on the internet. And it's a violation of my constitutional right, Fourth Amendment.
Proceed, proceed.
This is a public forum. This is City Hall. I have all the liberties of the First Amendment protecting me right now while I'm speaking here as long as I'm not making threats or saying fighting words. The city of Lamarck's criticism policy during the city council meetings violates the First Amendment and the city is opening itself up for a lawsuit by enforcing it. The Supreme Court made it clear that one of the most precious liberties safeguarded by the Bill of Rights is the sacred promise enshrined in the First Amendment that citizens enjoy the freedom to complain about their government leaders. Rosenblatt versus Bear, nineteen sixty-six, Garrison versus Louisiana, nineteen eighty-three. With that being said, I'm going to be talking about that piece of shit that just left, Joseph Lowery. I'm going to be criticizing him. Uh, instead of him taking care of his business and representing his district in a professional manner, he's making dick jokes and calling me Harvey Freeballs on Facebook and embarrassing himself and the city. I have all the screenshots right here. He called me a baby abuser, crackhead. Joseph Lowery, by saying I'm a baby abuser and a crackhead shows you have a clear disregard for the truth. I've never engaged in any of these behaviors you described. The video he's referring to clearly shows that I was attacked and I pepper sprayed the man that attacked me. The police investigated and arrested the man who attacked me. So I guess he's saying the police didn't do their job right, when normally he says the police can do no wrong. He is very biased and unfit to hold office. His statement shows intent to damage my reputation regardless of the truth, which is why I'm suing him. My lawyers have been all this has been turned over to my lawyer. Um, here's another one of his posts. Uh, I would sue you, but you live in a RV and you don't have any money. Then he posted my address all over Facebook. Then he posted my landlord's address, my, my former landlord in Fort Worth. She's a sweet, nice old lady. He posted her address all over Facebook. This guy's a piece of shit. He's a coward that he didn't sit in here while I come up here. He says, I'm a multiple time convicted felon in Texas, Alabama, Mississippi, and I have stalker charges in Dallas. I was charged with stalking for recording a cop in Dallas and it was dismissed. He has a lot of room to talk. He's an alleged meth cook with a criminal record a mile long. I've had one felony in my whole life. Uh, I was illegally searched and my wife's prescription medication was found on me. That's the only felony I have. He says right here, jailbird, you're spineless. You're a fraud. Harvey, how badass are you? I'll whip your ass. Mutual combat is legal in Texas. If you got balls, say when, boy. And then he says, thug life. What a piece of shit, man. How you guys got this guy as a city councilman? Uh, get a job, Harvey Freeballs. He says, stop ripping off the taxpayers. I asked him, I said, dude, why are you looking up my criminal, criminal history? He said, it was sent to me by out of state law enforcement because they seen you attack me in my department. I have a lot more, man. Three minutes ain't even enough to cover this.
I, I, we, we're giving everyone three minutes. Gus, unless, unless you advise me to do anything different.
I didn't even get halfway done.
Yes, sir. I, I'm, I, I understand. I understand.
Thank you for not interrupting me and letting me uh, speak.
This is a night, a night for challenging names and handwriting. I'm so sorry. Nicholas, is it Roke? Rookie, welcome, Mr. Nicholas. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Nicholas Rookie. I'm the owner of fifteen thirty-five Newman Road here in Lamarck. I guess I'm just continuating on the uh, uh, my aunt's, uh, Kat Snard's uh, statements. Um, so yeah, uh, um, just to continuing to uh, continue on what she was saying and uh, you know, further um, detail, all that, uh, we were charged back in two thousand twenty-two, uh, oh eight, oh nine, twenty-two for um, the residential plan review. Uh, we've gone through review of residential civil plans back in two, uh, October twenty-two, twenty-two. Uh, we've had it, we have an invoice dated sixteen November twenty-two from, from the city of Lamarck. Uh, we were charged some of six thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven fifty cents uh, for the permit fee, review of the civil plans, impact fees, and review of residential plans. Uh, this is also uh, comes from the city of Lamarck as a notice of new fees effective uh, September eighth, twenty-two. Um, since then, some, if not most of these fees were charged again on ten, nine, twenty-three uh, via the uh, city of Lamarck's receipt, uh, twenty twenty-three, zero, one, eight, seven, eight. With all this said, we've uh, been charged the maximum amount for the impact fees per the city's ordinance, uh, as well as multiple uh, review fees. Um, I'd like to highlight the black and white on the code enforcement on that one. Um, it's not code enforcement, it's chocolate, but again, all this should be black and white. Um, to which we have no access to sewer, causing further damages and delays in our construction. Now me as an owner, you know, I work for a living. I don't have much money, so you know, via, you know, vice versa, if we're put a sewer in, it's going to cost me, you know, somewhere up upwards of thirty thousand dollars to put a septic system in. That's going to kill me. It's just going to kill us in construction. You're going to have a house that's just going to degrade over time and look like a Honda house. You know, you see in the movies. So that's, I guess, all I have to say there. Uh, she did a good job.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I believe uh, uh, your aunt's with the city manager right there in the back. So if you would uh, want to join them on that conversation, that'd be great. Yes, sir. Thank you. Tamara Smith. Welcome, Tamara. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tamara Smith. Um, I live on Benson Street. I am only up here just to correct something that um, came from the last meeting. Um, during the last meeting, y'all had an agenda item um, concerning the parks department, not the parks board. Um, so I just wanted to put that on record because um, JB and uh, Mayor Pro Tem kind of switched the conversation from the department to the board, saying that the board um, was involved in the purchasing of the mowers. We had nothing to do with that. The equipment we spoke about was playground equipment. So that's it. I was um, said on public records, so I just wanted to put it back on public record. Um, so that way council understood the difference because I know the parks department is something Caesar's working on building and it's still relatively new. Um, and that way the citizens also knew, um, we have nothing to do with mowers being purchased. Um, and with that said, I think there might be a couple of items on your agenda. If not tonight, then upcoming. And I just want to put it out there for the citizens um, that we're asking up to certain amounts for different items. It doesn't mean it will be those things. We just have to get them before council. So that way we can have further discussions with um, the organizations and whatnot, so we can um, whittle down that budget and everything. That's it. That's it.
Thank you, Tamara. Paul Beard. Name and address for the rec- record call.
Paul Beard, fifty-five eleven, Everly. I come in today to talk to the city about a actual news site you guys are running. When I actually looked up the news sites, Larry News Network, the address was the city. So I can only assume that it's the city putting out slanderous information about me. That news site editor, those of Larry, went on to say that I done business with the EDC of Lamarck. I sold approximately seventy thousand dollars in EDC funds. So at this time, I will be requesting a meeting with your city manager and also your city council for some sort of financial settlement because it has caused harm to my business. This week I lost a contract and the lady actually stated that she didn't feel that I can be my fi- uh, my financial responsibilities with a down payment that she was giving me and she actually cited your guys' news site. I, you know, I'm not really sure when this Larry News Network site became affiliated with the city of Lamarck and started using the city of Lamarck's address, but you guys are responsible for that. It's, it's, if you look at the amount of information that's being put out, it's almost if you guys have a disgruntled employee, councilperson or some, because I see information about mayors. I see information about secretaries. I see information about attorneys. I mean, I see information just about anybody that this site doesn't agree with. And I mean, I just, I just don't understand why the city would run a site like that. I mean, it's just, it's, it's beyond me. I checked with the city of Gals and the city of Gals and does, doesn't have a road site with the address of city on it. And uh, I could say that your actual editor is one of your councilperson. So it gives validity to his claims when he says that I'm stealing EDC funds because surely he would, he would have access to actually look up and see if I ever received funds. But the crazy thing about it, I've never dealt with the city of Lamarck. But yet this claim is being put out there on social media. So I, I would uh, my information is down and I'll be expecting a call from your city attorney, your city manager, because I do, I actually want to sit down and I want to discuss the financial compensation package with this guy, city council, you know, with city council, city of Lamarck has caused my business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. Move now to public hearings. Conduct a public hearing to hear public input on. We are closing the regular meeting at six forty, six forty?
Six forty.
Six forty? And we're opening the public hearing. Gus, without objection, I'll take both of these together. Six one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two four dash zero zero one nine. Amending section thirty-two. The city of Lamarck, Texas Code of Ordinances, making various findings and providing for an effective date. Item six two, twenty twenty-three impact fee study, approving the twenty twenty-three impact fee study. Um, any persons uh, online or before me tonight, uh, interested in speaking to item six one? Any persons online are participating personally, physically tonight? Wish to speak to item six one?
Um, I would. Hello?
Yes, um, name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm Debbie Vastic. I'm a consultant to the city. I don't live in Lamarck.
If I may, um, Debbie, hey, this is Gus. Um, this is the public hearing, Debbie, for the citizens to give public input on this specific item. Uh, but the council, when it comes up for a vote, will bring it back to you if you would rather speak on the item then.
My bad. Sorry about that.
No problem. No problem at all. Any persons online or here in person wishing to speak to item six two? Any persons online or in person with us tonight wishing to speak to item six two? Here we will close the public hearing at
six forty-two.
Reopen the regular meeting. Old business, item seven, items presented to council for discussion and possible action. Council is six forty-two. And certainly these items have been discussed. Uh, if we move through this agenda, uh, I assume we all would greatly appreciate it. Seven one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two four dash zero zero one nine, amending section thirty-two of the city of Lamarck, Texas Code of Ordinances, making various findings and providing for an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Seven two, uh, two thousand twenty-three impact fee study, approving the twenty twenty-three impact fee study. I will entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight, new business items presented to council for a discussion and possible action. Eight one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two four dash zero zero two one, amending section four, four dash two, three of the city of Lamarck Code of Ordinances. Mr. Garcia, would you like to give us a brief impression?
Yes, uh, this is an update ordinance that uh, actually Gus has worked with our PD on quite extensively. Uh, should any questions arise from it, it is having to do with our um, formerly called our predators list and so forth. And so Gus, did you have any time in for updates on this?
Just as, as I would say, um, specific questions, I would refer to the police, uh, police department, Lieutenant Gandy's here. Um, but council has in front of you all is a redlined version. Um, the red lines represent the uh, changes to the ordinance. Most changes.
Counsel, do we need to hear from Mr. Gandy? Uh, Lieutenant Gandy? Or are we ready to proceed? Hearing nothing, uh, do, do we have a motion or no? I didn't, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing number, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight two, intent to apply for a loan through the T W D B under the C W S R F program authorizing an intent to apply for the fiscal year twenty five Texas Water Development Board Clean Water State Revolving uh, Fund. Mr. Garcia, would you like to briefly uh, present?
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, this is a, an intent to apply. We have been invited to apply for this opportunity. Uh, we have a break available as well as our uh, engineer representatives here should you need them. Uh, this is to help identify some of the uh, excuse me, begin to address some of the issues that we've had with our sewer and we'll, we'll open the floor for questions that you may have.
Very good. We need a brief description. Uh, someone here is uh, asking the council to affirm the application for a loan. Uh, so we need answers. Uh, what are we, what are we attempting to do? How much would this loan be? What are we attempting to do uh, with this loan? Is there, are there plans in place? Council approved plans in place uh, to meet uh, the, this loan application. Uh, how will it uh, impact our utility uh, fund? Uh, how will we, uh, in the long run, save dollars and reduce the cost of our water bill? Someone help us with some information uh, before this council begins to consider this item. Would that be Rick or would that be you?
I, I would ask Rick to help him.
Can, can we get their folks heard, that heard loan? And I'm sure they're interested in the explanation. So if you would, Mr., Mr. Rick.
I'll, I'll be able to stay clear. So this is a, a letter of intent to apply for the loan. We submitted, the city submitted based on council approval um, to the twenty twenty-five intended use plan for clean water state revolving funds. We put that application in as far as a project earlier this year. The city was selected as one of the few cities within that plan to apply for the loan. It's an eleven million dollar loan. Council action tonight does not approve the application. It only approves the intent to apply for the, for the loan. So for clarification, we currently have an application in process that has been approved by city council to apply. We have not approved the loan at this point in time for ten million dollars underneath the Clean Water S R F plan from twenty twenty-four. That's this year's plan. This intent to apply based on an invitation from the Texas Water Development Board is for the twenty twenty-five plan. It's an eleven million dollar loan, payments about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. It works out to be about twenty-five cents per day per residence based on the seventy-five hundred taps that we have currently right now. This loan payment would not start until twenty twenty-seven, most likely. If, if we get approved for the loan. So the process that we're talking about here is an intent to apply based on an invitation from Texas Water Development Board. There's a very few select cities that get that invitation. We have that invitation. We're coming to council to move forward. We need to send that intent to apply tomorrow by midnight. Unfortunately, they don't give us a lot of time. If I could remind Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So this is something that we our, our issues tied to sewer have brought us to this point. We've looked at different forms of potential funding. Um, we were invited to apply for, for Um, we were invited to apply for, for the last one. This is one that may, we may be qualified for some forgiveness. Um, we know that we've had a lot of challenges with our sewer. We know that we're working hard with the GLO funds that have been provided. However, we're also aware that those will not address all the needs that we have. This is, this would help us address some of the additional needs with some of our lift stations. Um, and particularly try to get as much as we can accomplished through the available funding. Should we even be awarded? This is just an intent to apply. Should we choose to do so at this time?
Council, do we have any questions for Rick or for Caesar on this item? Mayor Pro Tim.
I'm supportive of this. The, um. Uh, one of our last meetings, we discussed the, um. The GLO grants that we received, especially for the manhole covers.
Yes, sir.
And the, uh, the, the loads amounts originally were, as I recall, when we first started off at. I think two hundred and seventy manholes, covers that were going to be replaced. And then because of inflation. And the COVID delays, uh, that amount went down to a hundred and something. And then I think the final number is. Right now, what about a, a, just under a hundred, as I recall?
I'll ask Brent to help me out a little bit. I think we're like, we, there's. Uh, the counts are off a little bit from what you might remember. We've got six hundred and. Six hundred and eighty manholes in total. We're doing about two hundred. Roughly one, yeah, about two hundred is what we're doing with this project. So your, your percentages are close, but the numbers, yeah.
The, the numbers. So that was significant loss. This is important because it brings back. Uh, that ability to, to increase the number of manholes that we're dealing with.
Right.
And, um, and the other thing that, uh, it continues the rehabilitation of certain sewer lines. And once again, we've heard from our citizens over and over again, our residents of our challenges in that area, old Lamarck, uh, new Lamarck. And more importantly, uh, possibility as indicated in the, um. Uh, invitation to apply, we're eligible, we're eligible to have eleven, ten million of the eleven million. Converted to a grant and it's forgivable. So.
So that number might be high. Right now, we've, we've applied on these loans. Unfortunately, the, the city of Lamarck does not qualify for the disadvantaged. Um, classification through the Texas Water Development Board. There is a forgiveness for what they consider green infrastructure, which we did apply for. It runs about fifteen percent. So there is some forgiveness on these loans. But as far as disadvantaged communities or whatever, because of LMI, um, the, the numbers in the mark are too high. The biggest reason that we're looking at doing these clean water. Funds, which is, which is wastewater, they refer to as clean water, uh, which is what we're trying to achieve, is, um. Problems that we all know around town with, with backups in, in, in residential homes. People not being able to flush toilets during, during stormwater events. We have a tremendous amount of sanitary sewer overflows, which we're being cited for. From TCQ, it's a violation of state and federal laws. Those problems need to get rectified. They need to get fixed. And the only way to fix these problems is it's an I and I problem. It's an inflow and infiltration problem. Our, our, our inflow is, is tremendously high in this city, tremendously high. And, and these projects that we're looking at trying to do is to remedy this, this I and I problem, which is what the manhole project. That, that Mayor Pro Tim Copion refers to that we're working on right now. However, that's just a portion of what we need to do as far as manholes and pipelines. We're replacing. Seven hundred feet of pipe right now on Corbett and it's a hundred thousand dollars. And it's one block.
And, uh, just one other comment. This was an item that was discussed at one of the breakout sessions. Uh, during the recent, uh, Texas Municipal League. Convention. And, uh, over and over, I heard the cities, I wish I could get. What's good? It was one of those situations where I was finding myself there and the residents, everyone at the cities were sitting around and saying. Uh, the latest topic of discussion was, this time was a, um. I think it was, um, with some business that kept mentioning, I wish I had a, maybe it was Whataburger. There were everybody of the smaller towns were talking about, I wish I had a, a Whataburger, I think. And then I'd hear another town, I said, I wish I had a Sam's. I wish I had a Walmart. Uh, uh, and I, and I'm thinking, we have all those things. I just wish I had a good sewer system. And, uh, and so, so, uh, that would help these businesses. So that's why I'm encouraging us.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Any other questions for Rick or Caesar? Um, Rick, you mentioned, you made, I'm sorry, Rick, you made mention that the council had already approved. For the application for a ten million dollar loan on last year. Is that correct?
So the city council has approved what we did last year on the twenty twenty-four program. We came to city council for the same type of situation, intent to apply. City council approved that. We moved forward. We put the application in. The application has gotten through administrative review. Right now it's in technical review. The next item you will see, if the loan is approved from Texas Water Development Board. Is a final acknowledgement or approval of moving forward with that loan. You've signed nothing at this point.
Yeah.
That, that has indebted.
Yeah, yeah, I was just, I was just getting, just trying to get some clarification. So we did that last year for ten million.
For ten.
And this year you are asking us to do. Not you, but administration.
Sure.
Is asking council to approve, uh, the, uh, uh, an application only for eleven million.
For eleven million.
And you said, and it, and it's just fact finding. You said it breaks down to about twenty-five cent a day per customer.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it could be as low as nineteen cents a day if, if we do a loan for thirty years. They, they, you can do these loans for up to thirty years. The twenty-five cents a day is basically a twenty, a twenty-year payback. So those are discretionary, once again, depending on, on, on. Financials and your, your decisions.
So we talked earlier, and I'm gonna bring this horse into a barn real quick, but we talked earlier about, um, a plan. I ask you, what was their plan? You gave me a focus. Uh, you shared with me and the council and, and all of us that are here tonight. Uh, you shared that this would be, the focus of this would be our sewer system. Uh, but you did not indicate a plan, right? You didn't say our sewer system and. We're doing A, B, C, and D in, in area one, two, three, and four. Is there, again, this is just yes or no? Is there a plan associated with?
So one of the issues that we're working on is the current set of plans that, that. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Copion referred to, which was about an eight million dollar project. It turned out to be much more. So right now. That, that number, we're only doing about. Five. No, three and a half million of sanitary sewer work. The rest of that money is all grant administration and engineering work. So when we're talking about these dollars, there's, there's other factors involved, engineering and, and construction. So right now. We actually have a set of plans. It's been done by Attico that was not. Uh, funded by the GLO money that, that we're working on right now. That's a portion. There's, um, additional manholes in the system that were not part of that plan. And there's. Miles and miles of pipelines that we're also not in that plan as far as upgrading some of our other sanitary sewer pipes. So some of that would have to be developed. We know which pipelines are bad. But at this point in time, we don't have a set of plans for, say, engineering plans as far as what we're, we're planning on doing exactly.
Yeah, so it, it, that, that strikes me. To me, it seems as though we would have a, two things, incidentally. It seems as though we would, three things, actually. Number one, it seems as though we would, we would have this. And I'm saying this, saying this lightly. I'm not, I'm not feisty tonight. I don't, I don't feel my best. Seems as though we would bring this to council earlier. So that council can deliberate, right? Instead of the day before. Seems as though we would have a plan associated with it. And seems as though, uh, and I'm not getting on anybody. I'm just saying what I think, I think if we as a council start to raise the level of expectations. Then the staff will rise to it. Seems as though that would have been a whole presentation. If it were me, I would have had a whole presentation on, these are the areas that we need to repair. Uh, the, these, these are the areas where these, uh, potential dollars will flow. Uh, this is how it will shore up our system. Uh, this is how we would somehow save money. Uh, or have maximize our service, uh, in the future. Now, I'm not gonna, that, that has, I, I, I'm gonna leave that alone. But, but moving forward in the future, maybe if we do it that way. Um, we might be able to, to help our community members understand what we're talking about. So that's neither here nor there. I'm done. Any other questions for Rick or for Caesar? I will entertain a motion.
Move to. Proceed with the intent to apply.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nay. I'm voting against it, uh, because I vote against every loan application, because I want to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible. Uh, with our, uh, tax dollar. And I want us to have a plan in place before we go asking. Uh, our constituency for money. I don't want to hold up progress if my colleagues believe that, uh, this is a progressive move. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim raves about it. Uh, so I'll trust in, in, in that, uh, but, but certainly for my vote, it's a no. But I will support whatever this council, uh, chooses to do. Thank you, Rick.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Move on. Um, you were saying something about it being for, because I know we've had a lot of problems. In, in, um, District C with backups off of Erickson. So with, with this loan help to eliminate, to eliminate. Or slow down that area, because I know that's been, they've had a lot of issues over there.
We have Erickson, one of them. We, we actually identify about fourteen, fifteen, fourteen to fifteen spots right now. That we consistently have sanitary sewer overflows every time it rains. And when we put, we put. Thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of gallons of wastewater on the ground. And we cannot stop that right now because of the rainwater that's entering our system. And it's entering our system through manholes. And through bad pipe. So the, the, the process over the next ten years is to hopefully replace. Hopefully it's not a plan, but the intention is to replace. All of our older pipes, our, our clay tile pipes that are leaking extremely bad and fixing manholes and stopping the I and I. That will save the city thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, because we're pumping and treating. Rainwater at the treatment plant. We're running pumps. We're moving a lot of energy to move rainwater around the city, which is. A waste of money. We, we don't want to be messing with rainwater. So that's, that's really the ultimate. Purpose of trying to fix these problems is to get rid of the, the rainwater in the sanitary sewer system. And Erickson is just one of them that would get fixed. Yes.
So what, what I would like to see, Caesar, is to, um, if, if. The next meeting, you could actually show us where this loan would, would impact. So we'll have that on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. Move now to item eight, uh, three, grant application for, uh, excuse me, grant application and RFP for a grant administrator. Approving an application for grant funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture. For community development funding and authorize the release of requests for proposals. For grant administration services. Mr. Garcia, did you want to present?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on this item here, this is, uh, similar to the grant application. Uh, we recently received for work at Wisteria. Um, so we want to apply for the cycle again. It is a relatively, uh, low match. We've used this in the past to help with drainage, uh, when, when, with the previous award. We are, uh, attacking the problem that historically has plagued, uh, Wisteria. Specifically, we were funded and, and we're very happy to move that project forward. This project cycle is a maximum not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the project scope areas for this one potential site for drainage may include the Ashley Westward area. Uh, what we call Westward, uh, excuse me, Wisteria Phase Two. Or possibly Camp Circle Phase Wong, One, amongst others that are part of our draft CIP. The thought with this mayor is to evaluate during this process of putting this RFP out. Which one of those is most feasible with these funds and fits that, that, that project scope and those funds available? To not exceed the seven hundred and fifty, which one of those we could squeeze into that phase. So specifically, those are the three, because those were the next ones. We knew that originally we were going to attack the, uh, Westward, uh, project with those GLO funds. We knew the next worst one was Wisteria. We're trying to identify from these three, which ones we can address next.
So the, the RFP for the grant administrator, would that come? Before, after the application? And how does that? How does that work with what you just said as far as trying to find the best fit for the scope of work?
Yes, sir. So the idea was for the RFP to come out to find the, the actual, um, participating party to actually write the grant in this case. To which anybody can apply. This is open, uh, because with federal funding like this, you need to have some form of, uh, GA that would do that work. And then they would help us identify the scope that falls in line with the funding that's available.
Okay. So that, so that, that, the first part, what I just asked you is covered by the first part, the grant application.
Yes, sir.
And then in addition to that, we are also in anticipation of receiving the award, looking for a grant administrator.
As, as part of the.
Will that grant administrator help us to decide what scope of work best fits this grant funding opportunity?
Through the company and then whatever engineers, working with our staff.
But this grant administrator will be essential to do that.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
And how much is the total amount for the grant?
Not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And what would I match me?
It would be minimum of seventy-five, maximum one fifteen five.
Minimum of seventy-five, maximum of a hundred fifteen thousand.
Thousand, yes, sir.
And this, this grant is for infrastructure improvement, yes?
Infrastructure improvement.
Okay, I just want to get that on the record.
Yes, and we've had success with this funding source for drainage.
Okay.
This is how we're able to get the funding for District D for Wisteria project that we're currently working on now.
Okay, okay. Council, do we have any questions for Rick or, hold on, just Rick or, or, uh, Caesar? Uh, Mr. Law.
Wait, we, we already have a grant writer that's already been extremely successful. So I, I'm kind of, what, what are we? Looking to switch up for, because the one that we're using, isn't she have like a hundred percent success rate almost?
So we use several. We use several different granted administrators. What ends up happening with this type of funding is, is when you're going to use federal funding. From certain pots of funds, they require you to go out and RPA grant administrator. This does not preclude our current, any slew of the ones that we currently work with, or any others that out there may exist from applying. It's just there were certain requirements for apply for funding that requires us to go through this process.
Got it.
Unless we were going to handle it in-house. And at the current time, we do not have the capacity to do that.
Yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions for Mr. Garcia or Rick on item eight, three? Hearing now, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight, four, Houston Galveston Area Council Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five nominations. Designating a member for the Houston Galveston Area Council, uh, twenty twenty-five. Is that one of our members? We're designating tonight?
I believe we are in one second. I believe we're just re, I'm sorry, we are appointing, because you may not reappoint. Our current, uh, HGAC designation.
The one from our council?
Yes.
And then we would do an alternate.
And an alternate.
Okay. So this item, council is for us to appoint, uh, our representative to the Houston Galveston Area Council. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and also an alternate. Let's read back. Who, who is the representative and who's the alternate?
I believe it's Mayor Pro Tim is the, uh, representative and Councilwoman Nancy is the alternate.
Very good. Does anyone besides Mayor Pro Tim want to do this? This dirty, dirty job of being the Houston and Galveston Area Council rep? Very good. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that for Mayor Pro Tim?
For, for appointment stays the same.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, Ms. Nancy, you are the alternate? Uh, is there any persons here wishing to, uh, be the alternate for the Houston Galveston, outside of Ms. Nancy, Houston Galveston Area Council? Hearing now, I will entertain a motion.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that for Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, let's call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight, five, memorandum of understanding, considering a memorandum of understanding with the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Uh, I don't know if this is one that, uh, that, uh. Uh, Mr. Garcia, that you would lead us in this discussion or would that be Ms. Nancy?
I can lead.
Start off in Ms. Nancy, Ed?
If I may.
That be okay, Ms.? That be okay, Ms. Yancy?
Is that okay?
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
In discussions, we've had discussions with, uh, with several organizations, um, community-serving organizations that, that provide services to the community. We started our M O U project as a, a direction from council for social service delivery through a lot of our partners. Coincidentally, the C P A was one of the organizations we first approached. Uh, we were pretty much, pretty much told, hey, no, let's go pack the, the drawing board on some of that. And there were some things we needed to work on. At this time, I'm happy to report that tomorrow night, I believe at six P M, I am supposed to be at their next meeting to present this once more. Uh, at that time, I can go over some of the updates that we have and also understand that whatever we present to them is an open dialogue, right, as we do with any one of our M O Us. So I intend to meet with them tomorrow evening at six. That's the extent of what I have to report as of today.
Very good. Ms. Yancy?
So as, as a member of this association since twenty eighteen, going through that, Citizens Police Academy and also as the F B I Citizen, uh, Citizens Police Academy, I would like to see a charter. I have not yet to see a charter from this group. I think it's important that we know what this group is about, that they're not operating as a political action committee. Because it was told to me that I could not renew my membership because I participated in a march. Now, that would be setting a very horrible precedent in this association and there's a lot of different things, people thinking it's the cops doing it. It's not the cops doing it. It's a, a five oh one C three organization that has actually said that. And I was frankly quite appalled about that. So I want to make sure that whatever relationship that we have, because that was not the case when I was a member. Uh, I've never seen that done in that organization. Um, I was always able to take pictures with that organization. And now because we have new leadership, uh, I think they're changing the rules. And I want to make sure that we have a copy of their charter uh if we are continued to do in-kind services and in-kind, in-kind things of that nature. Because what it was originally in twenty eighteen is not what it seems to be today. And I want to make sure that District A, because there are other people across this city that march and God forbid that they be allowed, not allowed to be a member of this association and the Alumni Association. So I want to make sure that they are adhering to the rules of their own national organization because this was one of the, I took great pride in this organization uh when we first joined. So I want to make sure that before we sign anything, we need to make sure what their charter says. And I haven't been able to get a copy of it. And if we can do a formal ask for that, so we can make sure that that's not setting that precedent in this city.
Uh, certainly, uh, Councilwoman Yancy, we will definitely do so. And again, anytime that I meet with any organization for a discussion for an M O U, that M O U actually comes to you for ratification either way with whatever subsequent backup that we would need at the time. So I will, I've made note of that request. We'll make sure we bring that back and then also, and that's even if we bring it back.
Right. I think we need to bring it back. And I'm going to request that the president come as well to answer questions from this council.
You're going to request, I'm sorry, Ms. Yancy, I was, I was, uh,
I'm going to request that the president.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, something?
I'm going to request that the president.
Okay.
Come to address the council because I have some questions.
Okay. Well, you mean when, okay, I got you. I got you. I got you. I got you. Okay, I got you. I'm with you now. We, are you done?
Yes.
All right. Uh, anyone else? I know Mayor Pro Tem asked to uh jump in. Did you want to go?
I have a question. Uh, Mr. City Manager, if you know, or, or, um, or Mr. City Attorney. On our memorandums of, on memorandums of understanding, the M O Us with any group, aren't members of council kind of honorary members of those groups? Uh, uh, and I'm just, I, uh, I, uh, I, I just, just from past experience with my memorandums of understanding, right? Especially if it's a government group.
Go ahead. Formally, I, I don't, I, I do not recall off the top of my head ever putting that formally in an agreement.
Uh, I'm just.
Say, say that again, Gus.
Sure. So I ju- I just don't remember having formally written into the agreement that every member of city council is a member of your organization.
Into each M O U.
Yes.
To be clear, not, it's an honorary.
Right, yeah.
Where we can attend, we, if we so desire, we're supportive of, of the groups. Uh, uh, I may, I may make a contribution from my own budget, that sort of thing, right? Without having to necessarily join the organization. I, I, that's been my experience, my own personal experience from other groups.
I'm, I'm not sure that that's been formally written in. Now, what o- other organizations do that I, I defer to them on that.
Okay.
Okay. Was that, oh, hold on, hold on, Ms. Yancy. Was that, were you done?
Yes.
Mr. Larry, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I actually.
And then Ms. Yancy, come back to you.
I received, uh, first of all, I'd like to state that there's, there's not a lot of, uh, the whole truth isn't being told by Ms. Yancy. I have received the ethics complaint. The march, I don't believe was part of that at all. So.
Mr. Larry, excuse me, when you said you had received the ethics complaint?
Yes, you received it too, as in your email.
What, which, uh, for the record, what, what are we referring to?
Uh, the ethics complaint against Kimberly Yancy.
Okay.
And uh, it pertaining to her, her behavior and violations of what was uh done at the meeting. Um, but I, to my recollection, there was nothing in there pertaining to a march. Um, but uh, we'll leave that for the, you know, for the, for the back, I guess. Um, but uh, we need to have, when we speak up here, I think it's important to tell the, the public the truth um about that kind of stuff, so.
I would like to respond to that.
Okay, hold on. Yes, ma'am. Hold on just a minute. Ms. Larry, were you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Yancy, uh, give us five minutes. We, we're going to bring this one into the board.
Uh, I, that says, uh, can I ask the chief to take, to come to the mic, please?
What do we, uh?
Because he was there.
Okay, so we're not gonna, I, I'm, I'm the presider, not, not which, which I, I know.
Because.
Hold on, Ms., hold on, Ms. Yancy. Hold on, Ms. Yancy.
Want to bring that?
Oh, Ms. Yancy, hold on. Let me preside. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. I was just reminding you, Caesar is not the presider. You had to ask that of me. You're asking for.
I didn't want to give him the director, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I got what you're saying. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I can ask him to come approach. Um.
Chief.
We, we, let, let's, let's not, let's not even, let's not even uh do that. Uh, Ms. Yancy, are you, are you suggesting that Mr. Larry's comments are untrue?
I'm suggesting they're untrue because he was not there and I was present and Chief was present.
Okay.
We were, I was told at that meeting that I could, could not, my membership was being revoked or I could not renew it because I participated in a march against the cops. That is what was said verbatim by the president. That's why we attempted to have a meeting. She has refused. I'm concerned that if we continue this relationship and not get this clarified, it could set a horrible precedent within our city.
Okay, okay.
Chief was there, he heard it. It was very embarrassing. And I do not like a fellow councilman to tell me that since he was not present, that that uh did not occur.
Yeah, I, I get that. We, we don't want to really involve staff. I will say, chief, if there's anything that you disagree with, with Ms. Yancy's statements, you can come up, uh, and you can assert yourself. If you, if you don't, I'm going to move on.
Would you like?
When I, when I, when I, chief, I don't want, unless you are disagreeing, but I'm going to preside over this. We're not going to fight. I'm not doing that tonight. None of us are. If you disagree with Ms. Yancy's statements, you can come up, chief. I'm saying that to you not as a mayor, but presiding over this meeting. Uh, if you agree, I'm going to move on and stipulate. Okay, let's move on. Ms. Yancy, you were heard. That didn't happen that way. Uh, chief is not uh, uh, correcting the record. Let's move on. Now, I have questions. Did anyone else have any questions? Okay, I have questions. Caesar, as quickly as possible, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. Is there issue with, with, with an M O U with, with the, the C P A? Are they, are they having an issue with it?
We haven't brought it back since the original time that we had the discussion.
Do what? Now say again?
We have not brought it back since the original time. I wouldn't know until I have the meeting.
So you don't know that to be true? Okay.
I don't, I don't know that to be true from them.
A statement was made and I'm interested in it. A statement was, because I don't know a whole lot about C P A. Uh, and I'm, and chief, I, I will ask you to approach on this because I don't know a lot about it, but I want to find out about it. Statement was made earlier that uh CPAs rarely uh rarely sign M O Us with municipal governments. Is that, is that something that you, that, that you agree with or no?
Well, I heard that and it came from then the president at that time. And, but I, I, I just want to clarify something. Uh, almost three years ago, we started with almost, well, every M O U in the city, libraries, I got two or three, it's P D, there is an M O U. If we're dealing with outside agencies, a, a memorandum of understanding is a, is not a bad idea. And we brought this up almost three years ago and there was a lot of fire and discontent about that they shouldn't have an M O U. We had some, there was a relationship issue three years ago, two and a half years ago. Caesar and I talked about this and you probably heard about it. It's a lot better now. Things are, things are on the mend. We're getting along really good. But when I deal with an agency as much as I deal with the seat, the Citizens Police Academy Alumni, I deal with them more than any other agency and they don't have an M O U. So whether the state doesn't, you know, there's none in the state that have a M O U, I think it doesn't matter. The city manager has directed us, the whole city, to have an M O U if you're dealing with agencies. R C C has one with me. The Gulf Coast Center has one with me. We're going to get one with uh Unbound, which is another agency with Human Trev.
I, I got it, chief.
So they're no different.
I, I got it. I got it, chief. So a- at the end of the day, we don't know if this is something that's frowned upon in that organization. That would be uh important for us to know. I get that, that we require M O Us. I'm not asking that question. The question I'm asking is, is there any legitimacy to the statement that they normally do not engage in M O Us? You don't know the answer to that tonight, it sounds like. I don't know the answer to that. I would like the answer to that as we move forward. Number, number three, uh, what would be chief, uh, uh, not chief, uh, Caesar, what would be the benefits? Uh, I'm going to finish this and then we're going to, we're going to entertain a motion. What would be the benefits uh to the Citizens Police Academy uh, uh, because of their partnership with the city? What are they benefiting from being in partnership with us?
Uh, the benefits could range from uh part, like official partnership in certain events. It could mean co-application for funding because they are a recognized five oh one C three. So there could be uh plenty of funds that are available to five oh one C three and cities applying together that may or may not be. And to the statement that was made about whether others do it or not, no one said we can't be the first. So we will do investigation on that. There is, you, you've challenged us to be outward thinking and, and, and thinking differently. Here's an opportunity for us to attain funding for our police department possibly and also have a formal agreement with another community-serving organization.
I got you. But, but the point of that is if there is something uh in, in, in their uh, in their beliefs, right, uh, in their charter that, that suggests that this is not something that they normally do, we as a council would need to know that, right?
Absolutely.
Doesn't mean anything other than we need to know the entire story. The last thing I wanted, I wanted to say uh on this uh was uh Ms. Yancy asks for a copy of the charter for the C P A. And that's okay if we are asking for, and Ms. Yancy, I'm, I'm inviting you to make this, make this uh part of your priority on this council. That is perfectly okay if we're asking for the charters of every M O U. If we're going to do that, I don't have a problem. I'll vote, I'll support you on that. But we would have to do that with every, every organization if that's, if that's good, if that's okay. Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Um, let me.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Let me say.
And then we'll, and then we'll move to the, uh, if there is a motion, we'll move to that. Go ahead.
I don't know if there was a motion. I thought it was a discussion.
No, I mean, right. I mean, after you say what you're going to say, if someone wants to make a motion, we'll move to that.
First of all, th- this is an amazing organization. It was one of the first, uh, uh, besides Keep Lamar Beautiful that I was a part of. It has always been an amazing association and that's why it's just heartening to see that it being used as almost a shadow government. And I want to make sure that that's not the case based on who's president at the time. And I say that because there've been, and I'm going to put this on the record, mayor, horrendous allegations of me uh telling the president that I'm going to burn her house down. And that put my life at risk and my family's life at risk. I had to send it to the F B I um to let you, to make sure my family's protected. But when you have a president of a five oh one C three putting that on her LinkedIn page and basically saying uh that I'm creating LinkedIn pages in her name, this is a person, that, that presidency is a highly regarded position. At least it was when I was a part of that group.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it was ran very well and I just want to make sure that it remains an, an, an honorable uh association and that they be mindful of their new members who are now coming through that they uh display professionalism because now they too will, uh, will, people that speak for them will represent them. And so I am concerned about that as well because we do not want anything to put a stain on this organization. Most of those members, I was a member before they were. So I remember how it was run.
Yes.
And I'm concerned that uh we have lost that honorable placement because of personal disagreements. It shouldn't be that way. Because what you do for one, you should do for all.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think we need to make sure that that group remains honorable as it has in the past and that it will welcome all in the city of Lamar.
Yes, ma'am. Let me, let me ask you this so we can clean this up, Ms. Yancy. You, you said that someone, uh, and, and, and I really don't want to spend a lot of time on this, guys. Again, um, you said that someone, um, it said that you threatened to burn, do you have, all I want to ask you is, do you have proof? Is there, is there, is this in a text or a poster or something? That's all I need to know in order for this to, for us to continue to move forward. I'd let, guys.
If I may.
And this is the last, guys, this is going to be the last word on this and then we're going to move forward, guys. We're not going to, we're not going to use this council for us to go back and forth with one another when the people of Lamarck are expecting us to do important things when it comes to city services. Mr. Larry, go.
So, um, this, this was an important organization, uh, Ms. Kimberly Yancy said. And i- if that was true, then how come you didn't continue the twelve dollars a year to support it?
Okay, okay. All right, all right. We, let's move on, guys. Thank you, Mr. Larry. Uh, eight, five, eight, six, I'm sorry. Purchasing, authorizing the purchase of thermal imagers. Uh, I'm sorry, let's go back. Did you want to make a motion, Ms. Yancy, or?
No, no, that was just for discount.
All right. I wanted to give you that opportunity. Eight, five, eight, six, purchasing, authorizing the purchase of thermal imagers for metro fire apparatus specialists.
Sorry. Let me, I do have to respond to him.
Yeah, no, no, we're not, we're not doing that. We're not, no, no.
But I did attempt.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not, Ms. Yancy, Ms. Yancy?
I just.
Ms. Yancy, this is your first warning. You're out of order.
I'll say it.
You're, you're out of order. You're out of order. It's your first warning. We're moving on. Thank you. Eight, six, purchasing, authorizing the purchase of thermal imagers from the, Ms. Yancy, that's your second warning. You're out of order. Purchasing, authorizing the purchase of thermal imagers from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialist Incorporated in an amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, council, I will, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight, seven, purchasing, authorizing the purchase of a life pack defibrillator system from Stryker in the amount of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight, eight, purchasing, authorizing the purchase of a power load, power cots from Stryker in the amount of one thou- one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight, nine, cancellation of meeting, counseling the regular city council meeting of November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Ladies and gentlemen, this is uh Veterans Day, uh, and it is a city-recognized holiday. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Please, I need some clarity because we've got to cancel it. We're not having a meeting in November.
Yes, move today.
That, look at the, look at the one at the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, I will, uh, let's call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight, ten, cancellation of meeting, council, counseling regular meeting schedule November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four due to Thanksgiving holiday. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight, eleven, schedule special meeting. There you go, Mayor Pro Tem. Scheduling a special meeting session for council on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight, twelve, twenty twenty-five holiday calendar, approving the twenty twenty-five observed holiday calendar for the city of Lamarck. I will entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item nine, city managers' report. The council, as always, I will read these four items, uh, if there are any, uh, that we seek to discuss in more detail. Uh, certainly alert me and we will discuss those items. Nine, one. Uh, certainly alert me and we will discuss those items. Nine, one, library accreditation 2025.
Uh, Mayor, just, I would like to tag that one.
Okay. Did you wanna, did you have a whole discussion or did you have a sentence?
No, just a statement to, to say, I'd like to, um, let our residents know that our Lamarck Public Library was, received a, uh, an excellence achievement award at the recent Texas Municipal League, um, annual meeting. And, um, that's a, uh, an award that's given to, uh, a valued number of municipal libraries, and I want to acknowledge the great work that the library is doing.
Thank you.
Especially on outreach.
Thank you. Let's move through, uh, item two, library statistics, August 2024, anybody? Item three, nine, three, monthly crime statistics, August 2024, anybody? Nine, four, bid opportunities, anybody? Move now to good, items for the good of the order, uh, Mr. Garcia.
Sure. Mayor, I want to remind everybody that our Bayou Fest event is this, uh, upcoming this weekend now, uh, starting on Friday evening. If anybody would, uh, please, uh, be on lookout for all the different channels that we are marketing the event. We're excited to, uh, have some special guests as well as we commemorate our All-America City designation, uh, on Saturday. But we're also starting the event on Friday evening with a myriad of festivities. Uh, staff's been working very hard to put that together. I look forward for everybody's, uh, attendance. Also, since we will not be meeting, uh, before then, uh, reminder that our Halloween event, our Halloween trunk or treat is on the 24th of October. We look forward to having everybody here. There's still spots available. If anybody would like to participate, please contact our staff so we can, uh, get you guys a spot for our trunk or treat. Thank you very much.
Very good. Item ten, executive session. Uh, we have two matters, uh, one, uh, one complaint against the city manager and one complaint against council member District C. Any one of you gentlemen, uh, want to have your complaint, uh, discussed out in open session? Hearing nothing, we will move then to item ten, executive session. The city council for the city of Lamarck, Texas reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed above as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. 551.072, deliberations about real property. 551.073, deliberations about gifts and donations. 551.074, personnel matters. 551.076, deliberations about security devices. 551.087, economic development. Uh, we will have two items tonight. Ten, one, Section 551.074, personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, the city manager. Item ten, two, uh, Section 551.074, personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, council member District C. We are recessing from our regular scheduled meeting at.
Seven thirty-two.
And recessing into executive session.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. We are back from executive session at?
Eight forty-four.
And we're opening our regularly scheduled council meeting at eight forty-four. Item eleven, actions to be taken from executive session. Item eleven-one, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four. Personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, the city manager. Counsel, I believe that the complaint was withdrawn. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Complaint was withdrawn. So we'll move past that complaint to eleven-two. Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee. Councilmember District C. I will entertain a motion. I believe there were two complaints. And so I will entertain a motion. Is there an appetite for an action on the first complaint?
What was the first?
The first complaint was a complaint that Mr. Garcia was presenting in. And so he can't make that motion. I'm looking at him as if he could. Mr. Garcia, is there a, is there a motion on the floor? It can be a no action motion. It can be whatever the council chooses.
Mayor, I'll, I'll move. There's no action.
No action. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you know, we'll call for a vote of all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I don't oppose that. I just would hope that what we discuss in executive session would be respected.
Got you.
As he does not want to be called certain names, and I hope that that will cease today.
I got you. I got you. I got you. Are you voting in?
No action.
Okay. All right. The second complaint, Ms. Yancy.
I want to bring to our council attention, our own charter. Section two-point-oh-four qualifications. Councilmen shall be qualified voters of the state of Texas. Hold no other public office, be and have been a resident of the city of an, or of an annexed area for at least one year. Immediately preceding the election. A councilman shall immediately cease to hold office. If he shall cease to possess any of these qualifications. Be convicted of a felony or as otherwise provided by this charter. Section two-point-oh-five. Counsel to be judge of qualifications of its members. The city council shall be the judge of the election and qualifications of its members. For this power, for this purpose, it shall have power to subpoena witnesses and require records to be produced. The decision of the city council in any such case shall be subject to review by the court. And while I have asked the question about Councilman Lowry being a convicted felon, he said he is not. I, I am going to request that Mayor, we get that this council look into getting those records. I think we need clarification. I from one have seen, been receiving questions about it. I think it's a question that needs to be answered so we can let this rest and move forward. But I do want to let this council know that it's in our charter about qualifications. And also that we are the judge of our members. And that we can subpoena records to be produced so we can put this issue in our community at rest and go forward.
Yes, ma'am. Any, any responses?
Yes, Laura, did you want to respond? All right, all right.
Let you go ahead. All right.
Just before we get into it, I would remind counsel that someone's eligibility or qualifications or a subpoena of records is not on the agenda. So whether it's counsel chooses to discuss or not, I would ask you to be, please be cognizant of that fact.
I will ask you, Gus, to guide us and be very, very assertive in that so that we don't get off task. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lowry, did you want to respond?
Yes, I am not a convicted felon, and it has already been brought to the district attorney's office. And if you would like to make more complaints, you're more than welcome to. I would advise counsel to not use taxpayers' money to attempt to politically assassinate somebody. So I would caution elected officials to instruct the city attorney to use taxpayers' funds to use taxpayers' funds to attack a political opponent or adversary. But to answer your question, no, I am not a convicted felon, and you are more than welcome to contact the district attorney's office or Police Chief Randall Aragon.
No, we're, okay, we, we don't need to be running people's records at council meetings.
Gus, what, what, what we were discussing in the back was the idea of how we go about answering the question on whether or not a person who has been convicted of a felony has eligibility to hold office. It's different, I know, in different states. So could you elaborate on that?
I, I would say that if counsel wants to discuss that, I would ask that it be put on an agenda for future discussion.
Okay, that's, that's very good. Counsel, we've heard our city attorney. Do we have any parting shots? We're not going to discuss this in the, in any deep manner tonight. If it's worth discussing, we will put it, someone will put it on the next agenda to discuss. Outside of that, any, any deep burning sensations about this item?
I would, I would caution to use taxpayers' funds to attack somebody politically.
Mr. Lowry, I don't think that that's what anyone's intention is. You've said that twice. Just because you said it doesn't make it true. So we're going to just leave it at that. We need to stop.
There's a comment.
Yeah, I, I get it. No, no, no.
City Attorney was instructed.
Yep, we're not going to do that, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Lowry. And we just, and we just.
Be truthful.
Mr. Lowry, okay, I'll let you talk. Go.
So, so, so you, you have instructed, or he was instructed, our city attorney was instructed to reach out to the attorney general. So you are using taxpayers' resources to, to attack a political adversary. So remember that.
If I may, Mayor, I have not been instructed to do anything, and just now I asked counsel to, if they wish to discuss it further, my ask was to put it on a future agenda.
That's what you said out here. It was different in the back.
Continue, Mr. Lowry, continue to speak. We're listening.
Go ahead.
We're listening. No, we want to listen to you.
You can contact the DA's office. We can all go down there and have a luncheon or something if you'd like.
Yeah.
Can I have two seconds here?
Hold on just a minute. Are you done speaking? You have the floor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ross.
So with the further information, looking into everything that I've done, the Attorney General's.
Alright, alright, alright. I, I, not to cut you off, council member, but this item is not on the agenda.
Roger that.
What we will say again is, is that is a false statement Mr. Lowry made. Again, what we can do, once this item is on the agenda, any council can see clarification from an attorney general. That's what councils do. And so we'll just move on from that. Ms. Yancy, did you have a motion? Did anyone have a motion on this second?
That we table this until further direction after the discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Very good. We are now at item twelve, requesting announcements. Requested by council, by mayor, councilmembers, items placed on future city council agendas. Announcements on city events, community interests. Texas Government Code five-five-one dot four-one-five. Items to, of community interest include expressions of thanks, congratulations or condolences. Item two, information regarding holiday schedules. Item three, an honorary or salutary recognition of a public official or employee or other citizen, except that the discussion regarding a change in status of a person's public office, public employment is an honorary or salutary recognition for the purposes of this subdivision. Item four, reminder about an upcoming event organized or sponsored by the governing body. Item five, information regarding a social ceremony or a community event organized and sponsored by an entity other than the governing body that was attended or scheduled to be attended by a member of the governing body or an official employee of the municipality or county. Announcement, announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety of the people in the municipality or county that has arisen after the posting of the agenda. Mr. Lowry, you are up first.
I would like to give recognition to one of our officers, Mr. Welch. Had an unfortunate event where I needed to get his, get the, the police department services. And even him knowing who I was, he did everything by the books. He, he, he said, Mr. Lowry, we're still going to do this by the books, asked for my ID, and just treated me like anybody else. And I, and I think that goes to show the, the type of training that these officers are getting here. And I think that, that's something that he would need recognition for as a, as a positive thing. One of the things that we learned in the police academy, the citizen police academy, was how Mr. Aragon teaches the officers to treat everybody the same, whether you're, you know, Joe Blow off the streets, or if you're the mayor. Those, those people need to be treated equally, and that officer showed that, and, and he needs recognition for that. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ross?
So I've gotten a lot of questions about the last council meeting and such, so I'm gonna be bringing up some stuff. So last council meeting, I had a stomach virus. And I'm not going to sit up here and embarrass myself in front of this, this council and everybody. Sorry, it, it happened right at the, the audit. Conversation about the audit. So during that conversation, we were talking about Sam's Club expenditures, which we got half the conversation. In July, yeah, we spent thirteen thousand dollars at Sam's. We had a hurricane, we, I know at least two, possibly three cooling stations, man, twenty-four hours a day. People sleeping here, eating here. We provided snacks and drinks and beverages. And then right after we were done, the library had its, it finally got to have its summer camp in here at council. So, yeah, we spent a lot of money in July. Now, if we want to talk about a forensic audit, and I've said this multiple times, I've said it since probably my second council meeting ever, we want to have a forensic audit. I don't mind looking at the disaster fund, reserve fund, Fund Ninety-nine, but we have to go back to minimum of March seventeenth, twenty-twenty, back to COVID, if we want to do that. I'm not looking at who went to Macy's and bought their two or three hundred bucks worth of shirts to have them done at scribbles. For that, that's ridiculous. Next. The VFW is very important to me. It's an organization between the VFW and American Legion over a decade ago saved my life when the VA had me on a thirty-six pill cocktail, fired my neurologist, and didn't tell me about it for over a year. One of those pills, if I would have stopped taking, had a fifty percent suicide rate. The other pill that they used to wake me up in the morning, if I would have stopped taking, had a ten percent suicide rate on top of it. So, yeah, you want to, I keep hearing about how I'm taking kickbacks and contributions from the VFW. Those people are barely holding it together. If you're talking about the two Dr. Peppers I have, when I helped them on a Wednesday and the cans that got busted and dented and stuff, yeah, okay, my Dr. Pepper kickback, we'll call it. If you don't believe me that I am retired, I have a copy of my retirement letter from the Department of the Navy for thirty years of service, twenty years active, ten years inactive. Finally, when I said I didn't get funded in the last executive session, it wasn't by the EDC. As a matter of fact, this letter from the commissioner of the EDC, or the chairman of the EDC, is public knowledge. And I will read down here, "Once your franchise agreement is active and your financing is placed, please submit copies of pertinent information to the corporation. Once received, assistance is available and additional board action can be taken." I was trying to rent the spot at four-oh-one Laurel because it was big enough for me to put a franchise in there that, let's, let's talk about this. Their forty-nine franchise units made twenty-eight million dollars in twenty-twenty-three. The private equity firm that was going to fund me at thirty-five hundred dollars a month for five years and possible ten percent equity in Chef de Shaky LLC, which has been an LLC in the state of Texas since twenty-eighteen, decided not to fund me because of the political turmoil in the city of Lamarck right now. Six weeks of front-page newspapers. So, yes, when I said it back there that we had canceled my funding, I meant we, as the council and the city, political turmoil has lost several small businesses in this city because they don't want to be here. Want to talk about saving some property tax dollars? Ask yourself what a million dollars, what the sales tax for the city on a million dollars is, just out of curiosity. Go do that math. Thank you.
Jancy?
Okay, um, I want to thank everyone that came out to our town hall meeting October seventh. It was a very good, productive town hall meeting, a meeting. I want to thank all our community vendors that came out as well that day. And so I know you, you and I, Cesar, got some good information and some feedback. The residents, they talked about all the, the positive things that they see happening in Lamarck with being an all-American city. And now it was a blessing to have to go there on, have the, the town hall meeting on Monday, and then to sit at TML in Houston, and to hear that we won the safety award for the entire state of Texas. And to hear the video when they came on to say, and they're in Lamarck's desire to be one of the safest cities in Texas. And it did, it did. It brought tears to our eyes because, because we've worked very hard. This staff, this city manager, this mayor and this council has worked very hard together. And we are going together, forward together. And I want everyone to, to, to know that we're going to be okay. Because we are doing more now than we've ever done before. And sometimes when you have that tension, and as a believer, my mother used to always say, when there's, when there's great, when there's a great attack, there's a greater blessing. And so I believe there's a greater blessing for our city. We just have to press forward that. I look forward, but first of all, let me tell the chief, I'm very proud of y'all winning that award. That was amazing. We were finalists last year, and we won this year. And everywhere I went in TML, they were like, oh, you're Lamarck. Oh, you're Lamarck. Oh, you guys won that. And you, and that was, that was, that was great to walk around to the different booths with our badges and talk to people because they were there in that, in that room of over two thousand people when they announced our name. So kudos to you and your staff and to, to our city manager and all the things that you all had to endure. You're still prospering. So I look forward to Oktoberfest, which is, this is our birthday. We're seventy-one years old this month. That's this weekend, and so I, BioFest, what did I say?
Oktoberfest.
You know what?
That's Galveston.
Yeah, no, so, yeah, somebody had something on the twelfth. It was a church. I'm thinking churchy. They called it Oktoberfest. BioFest, I'm sorry. Thanks for the correction. BioFest, our park, is it our park board or park department has worked hard on that?
Parks Board.
Our, our park board has worked hard.
And Parks Department, I'm sure, I'm sure.
And the Parks Department. So, yeah, so please go and attend it. Tohono Night is Friday, and then Zadeco is on Saturday. So please go and support that. And thank you, hats off to the Parks Board and the department for everything they've done to keep that a tradition in our city. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. May I approach?
Also, I'd tag on the recognition to the Lamarck Police Department, all our fine officers for the Public Safety Award recognition there. And it's always motivating and emotional to get up there, just like at the All-America City Award that, that recognition that's received. I also want to congratulate our Public Works Department. They likewise were a finalist. And we were one of the few cities where, that were twice named as finalists on the awards that were presented at the Texas Municipal League, which is something that is very different. And then also, let's not forget the award and recognition given to our library as well, too. And I, I look like a Russian general with all the little ribbons that were being attached. So with the recognition that was in the awards, please come out to BioFest. I think the activities begin on Friday at about five o'clock. And then, but I do remind people that the fee is a, a parking fee. There is a parking fee. Getting into it is free, but there is a parking fee, and that is online. I, I guess you go to the BioFest site at our website, and you can prepay for that parking fee. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lowry, you have something else you want to add?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up something that happened to me last week. We had, and I, and I never heard about it before, but a boo basket. I, I don't know if you guys have heard of that before. But somebody put a basket of, there was decorations and candy and holiday festive stuff, and they, and they put it on your porch, and they said that you've been booed, now you have to pay it forward to somebody else. And I thought it was my sister, then I thought it was my mom, and it was frustrating not to know who it is. I think it was Terry Taylor. And, but that small act of kindness turned, turned into close to a hundred and, one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty more baskets being passed out from other people being booed and then other people. So that, that kindness spread like a wildfire, and it was so neat seeing the people talk about it online, how, how they got, you know, senior citizens and it just, it, it was really uplifting to see in the community that small act of kindness just went, went, it exploded. So whoever started that, thank you very much, and hope it keeps going.
Is, is that all it takes is for us to give you a boo basket? Because, because we can all get.
You gotta know what's inside the basket.
So, who wants to put in, wait a minute, I gotta stop this whole, who wants to put in for a boo basket for this guy? Let's get this, get this show on the road. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Good for you, man.
I do have to add on to that statement, though. I was reached out today, and they told me they reached out to you. There are certain people that it's not, Halloween is not a part of their religious stuff, and they ask that they are, they ask to remain anonymous, but please don't be courteous of other people's religious beliefs.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get us to get, get this man a boo basket so we can, so he could smile.
I think it's a great act.
Goodness, I'm teasing, I'm teasing with you, Mr. Lowry. Having fun. Alright. Ms. Yancy, and perhaps other council members brought this up. BioFest is this weekend. We are attempting two days this, this, this time around, a Friday night and a Saturday. We would love to see you out at our Mac McGaffey Highland Bayou Park on both of those days. Certainly, if you can't make both of them, we would love to see you at one or the other. I believe this, the end of this month, Ms. Nance, Trunk or Treat, do you have dates available? I'm, I'm sorry.
October twenty-fourth.
October the twenty-fourth, at the end of this month, will be Trunk or Treat, great experience. Our young people over at Haley Elementary, they start their trunk or treat activities at Haley, and then they walk across over, pass City Hall to the library for part two of this great trunk or treat event. It's a great partnership between Haley Elementary and the city of Lamarck and those young people participating in that event. All smiles, families, all smiles. Great event. Look forward to seeing you out there at that event as well. Number three, Mr. Garcia. I was asked to go and look at the drainage over off of Newman Road, and I believe you're familiar with that. My question is, from, from the forty-five corridor, there's tremendous amounts of work that needs to be done to the drainage ditches and easements over in that area gets a little better. I guess that's behind, it used to be called Dian's. What's the name of it now? The, the brewery, the, I mean, the distributor. You know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about.
What is it now? Is it Fauze? Yeah, okay. So then, and then, and then when you go back toward, what is that? Five nineteen, it starts to get heavy again. And so if you can help counsel, just email all of us, what, whatever the plan is for that, we, we'd appreciate hearing about how you're going to navigate that issue. Item four, I wanted to congratulate the police department on their, on our award for public safety at TML. Those of you that, that have been knowing me for a while know that I am a tremendous allergy sufferer. and, and seasonal allergies, uh, can take me out, uh, for a couple of weeks at a time. And so that's why you hadn't seen me in the last two weeks, uh, been dealing with some allergies. But in the interim of that, I thought I was gonna be able to make it for that one day, chief. Uh, but I was unable to, but I am so proud of the Lamarck Police Department uh, for, uh, bringing home this, uh, recognition. Uh, many people believe that recognition means, uh, perfection and it doesn't. Uh, many people believe recognition means excellency and it doesn't even mean that. Uh, recognition means that you, uh, you are aware of the challenges, uh, that you face uh, and you are addressing those challenges in an effective and an efficient manner. And that's what that award, uh, as, uh, as we receive it, that's what I believe it says. It doesn't say that we're a perfect police department, doesn't say that, uh, our crime rate is immaculate. Uh, it says that we are aware, uh, and we are, uh, taking responsibility for, uh, and moving toward a better community, uh, as it relates to crime and safety. And so kudos to you, chief, to your officers, uh, to the rest of our staff, uh, for that, uh, momentous, momentous occasion. Uh, it is the Texas Municipal League, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So when we started to add the Texas Municipal League to the International City Managers Association, I believe, uh, on last week, Mr. Garcia attended, uh, an event in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, uh, that awarded this, this safe city initiative, this public safety initiative, uh, from the internet, and I'm gonna let you, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let you, you have that one. But, but, but now we have two awards for this safe city initiative. Uh, and, and, and the recognition to this great city, uh, is starting, uh, starting to, to happen. Uh, and then the National Civic League, uh, earlier this summer, the National Civic League, uh, awarded us as one of the top uh, ten cities, uh, in All-America City. In fact, uh, these are three different governing, uh, bodies, three different institutions. One of them is international and it deals with the city manager's role. Uh, one of them is, uh, statewide, uh, and the other one is a national organization that, that deals in civics. Three different types of organizations, all bringing awareness to not perfection, not even excellency. But they're bringing awareness to the attitude of the people of Lamarck uh, and the innovation that that attitude pushes forward. And so we ought to be proud of the fact that we are finally being recognized on a state, a national and an international level. Doesn't mean that we have problems, don't, doesn't mean that we don't have problems. It doesn't mean that, that, that we have answers for everything. Uh, in fact, it can mean that we have, uh, more problems, uh, than cities that didn't win. But I believe that that's something that we ought to feel good about. It doesn't matter who submitted the, the application. It doesn't matter what program was cited. Uh, what matters is we are all people that believe that this city can be better. And if in fact, there are people that are affirming these beliefs with us, people that have, have seen cities and have examined cities and have analyzed cities, uh, and, 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 and have, uh, have been, uh, uh, at this, uh, at, 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 at great length. If those entities are affirming that there is potential being realized in our city, doesn't matter who we agree with or who we don't agree with. What matters is finally there is some awareness being brought to our city. Doesn't matter who submitted the paperwork. Doesn't matter what council or what mayor, none of those things matter. What matters is we've been in the dark for quite some time. And now the, 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 the light of, uh, other organizations validating who we are and who we are attempting to be is a long time coming for this great city. And so I hope that we can look past, uh, all of the things that we know we have to, we have to fix and take pride in the fact that we are making steps toward moving in the right direction. Number five, uh, early voting, uh, starts soon. Uh, it does not matter to me who you vote for. Uh, what matters to me is that we all participate in the electoral process. That is a valuable, valuable opportunity that does more in affirming who you are as an American than it does sometimes to the vote tally. We get it. Some states, some races, uh, uh, doesn't matter how you vote, those races, it appears, uh, those races have already been decided. We get it. We can, we can look across, uh, all of our, uh, entities and we can see races like that. But it doesn't matter. What matters is when you go into the voting booth, you are affirming your identity as an American and your belief in American democracy. Every time. Doesn't matter who wins, doesn't matter who loses. What matters is you have once again affirmed yourself as an American. And once again, you've affirmed your belief in democracy. If we can do that, then we can, in Lamarck, move beyond a ten percent participation in our municipal elections. And so I encourage you again, uh, if you hadn't voted in a while, or maybe if you've even voted here in our last election, to go out, uh, to vote, vote, to let your voice be heard in this wonderful, wonderful experiment that we call American democracy. Again, thank you all for, uh, for tonight. I will allow Mr. Garcia certainly to share with us uh, more of the great news from TML and even from the International City Managers Association, conference that you attended to receive the award.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we've been on a heck of a run and I think it was well stated by everybody here tonight. Um, more work to be done, a lot more work to be done and work that we don't shun from. Uh, but also work that'll be much, much easier to accomplish if, if we all work together to get to, uh, get it actually done. Um, it was a great honor to, um, share that honor with all the residents of this city. So much so that we have other cities asking us what, what it is that we have going on here. It takes great pleasure when other city managers, you know, kindly tell you to slow down, you know? But I'm pressing sure that with, with your continued support, we're not gonna slow down. We're gonna do whatever it takes to make Lamarck, you know, the best that it could be. So I thank you all for your continued support and I look forward on, on keeping this shit moving forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Award did you win?
Uh, well, I mean, besides obviously All-America City, but the award did center for, for ICMA, did center over our efforts for, uh, public safety and community health is what the, the actual category that it was under. So it was a national award, uh, actually international award, uh, that was awarded to us for our efforts in that. And, um, so much so that folks are trying to duplicate some of the things and, and, and ways that we're doing. So Chief Aragon's gotten calls already from different cities in, throughout the state that actually want to come down and see what it is that we're doing. So that's always impressive. So thank you very much for your support.
Very good. There's nothing further. We are finally out of here before ten o'clock, Mr. Osteen. What did you feed us today?
What did you feed him tonight?
I will entertain. Last, last call for a boo basket, man. Mr. Lowry needs a boo basket. We get you another one. We get you a bigger one.
Big, big.
A big, big basket. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we adjourn.